I'd like to call the meetings over. Please go to the page of your flag. Flag to be raised.
The United States of America. And through the Republic, religious stands. One nation, under God, in the Israel. With the court of healing justice.
Nice to see everyone. Dr. Lee Anderson tonight. We expect Jen. Um, we need a motion and a second to accept the agenda for tonight. We'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll second it.
Um, if you ever say I. Against me and Sonny. The agenda is accepted. We have no one signed up for open forum. So we'll run the communications and um, the director of student services on audit report. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. First one we have is enrollment. Um, you can see our enrollment there, we're at thirty-two oh two. As of Monday. Monday, ten thirteen, yes. Um, so still hanging at that, you know, we budgeted thirty-two hundred, we're still hanging at that thirty-two oh two, but. Because of Wildcat Academy is where we're hanging off there, so with those twenty-eight kids in there. That's what's keeping us above in our enrollment. Um, you can take a look at the. The graph, doesn't show a lot this early, but you can see went down a little bit from September to October, which is fairly normal, but. We were down from the last five years to the last, yeah, this fifth year on there, so. Any questions on enrollment? Okay. On the EBS monthly report as of September. Um, you can go right to the graph if you want to, Michelle, thank you. Do you can see the general fund is showing revenue under expenses, but odd thing is, is we get two payments from the state every month. On the fifteenth and the thirtieth. The thirtieth did not get posted until ten one. So we are not seeing our revenue. All of our revenue is September. Thank goodness we have enough cash to cover our pre-roll on nine thirty, but yes. So that's why that's showing that, and you'll see the same thing when we get to the treasuries report. Um, community service. Things are looking good right that right now was revenue above expenditures, and you can see compared to the last couple of years, we've got a big shift there, so that's good. Food service is looking the opposite there, but again, we purchased a lot of equipment over the summer, so that's why it's going to show that way until we get closer to the end of the year to kind of even that one out. Um, and on the treasures report, keep in mind, the last one, we're showing revenues and expenditures on the treasures report, which we're still working on making this pretty, we'll get them. Um, Michelle doesn't like it. Uh, this is cash only. So we're just showing our cash, and if you see we're on outstanding deposits at two point six million. Um, that is where we've got the um. I love Brenda just putting on cheaters.
Oh, it's really small.
It is really small. Um, that is that deposit that we should have gotten on nine thirty, but it's still outstanding. Um, some exciting things, our audit field work actually finished today. They weren't here from the last time today. Went very well. I will give credit to Lauren on that, year two, and she's just rocking it, so it went really well. We have a couple of items, of course, we need to finish up, and then the plan is to have them come and present to the board in December. Kind of the same. The same December meeting, we're all doing truth and taxation at the beginning, and then we'll have the audit reports, it'll be. Financial meeting. Any questions on anything?
Isn't it an oddity to not get paid by the state on the day you expect to be paid?
Yes.
And so do we know why?
I don't.
Okay.
I was trying to figure out why we were so far off, and then Lauren's like, oh, I think I know what it is, that nine thirty did not get posted in your account until ten one, so. We'll, we'll do a little digging and try to figure out why that happened.
Didn't happen without the district?
I don't know, that's a good question. I will ask.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Veronica?
No, Madam Chair, our missing board member will be here in ten minutes.
Thank you. All right, um. We'll move on to the student representative update. Nice to see you.
Yeah, hi. So I have my list here.
Okay.
It's kind of like the end of fall season for activities and stuff, like shifting into winters, and a lot of like sections and finals and stuff. Um, I believe today that some cross-country runners just made it to state. Which is very exciting, very exciting. Um, some tennis players are going to state, and then volleyball and football are sort of entering like the section, these playoffs. Um, hopefully they do well, I think that they're gonna have some tough competition, but I have faith in them, I think they can do it. Um, I know that dance just had their tryouts, they have their JV and varsity teams picked out. Uh, it sounds like they're still getting some stuff figured out, maybe like their jazz or kick, I don't really know, but. They're, they're figuring that out, which is exciting too, they've gone to state for a couple of years now, so I'm sure it'll be another great season. Um, the musical, that's what I'm in, we are currently sort of finishing up our sets. So we have like big set pieces and props and costumes and stuff, and we're getting some more like community outreach stuff planned. Um, our show dates are the fourteenth and fifteenth, twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third of November, so the two weekends before Thanksgiving. And on the fifteenth, there's going to be like a little munchkin party, which is for younger kids, right before our show, and the show's at two o'clock, so I imagine that would start around the end of. But we're pretty excited about, I guess, new stuff kind of coming up this year. Um, for student council, we are about to go to Crivings Resort for our fall retreat, that's like a leadership opportunity where we get to like learn the. The next new big bright things, we see a keynote, it's pretty enlightening, it's pretty fun, allows us to like network with other people too, so that's pretty exciting. And we're getting started with our Veterans Day ceremony planning, so that's gonna be on November eleventh. It's usually a pretty good ceremony, so invite the veterans you know in the area. Um, the Shisalalei High School Select Choir just got a visit from the college choir from UMD. So we got to sing with them a little bit, learn a few things, that was really cool. Band just had their fall concert. And then just in general, like in school right now, people are getting ready for Halloween, so going to Denny's and stuff, but finals week is next week, so. It's getting a little tense, but it's also not like the end of the semester, so not those core classes, but. Yeah, I don't know, I think right now it's very much a transition period for a lot of people, but it's, it's going pretty well, I'd say, in the building.
It's great.
Yeah.
And arguably, we're wrapping up first quarter.
I know, well, I think it's weird, I feel like yesterday I was answering my school question and graduating, so for sure.
Yeah, a little bit fast, thanks for your career. Um, and just as an update about student representatives, Sarah and I are going to interview candidates either November fourth or sixth. I believe on our two dates, so we'll be adding a junior member, and then so we'll be back to two. I'm excited, yeah. Totally. Sarah, thank you for your update. Any other questions for Annika? All right, thank you. And then are there any board committee updates from anyone who attended any committee meetings?
I did virtually, because it was uh. Health and safety was a half hour that I could attend before our meeting, and again, there was. You know, I just, I'm just gonna make a statement, that there's a. Brian and people that. You guys know this more than ever, but there is so much going on here, and even at the health and safety, and it takes a whole bunch of people. To make a lot of things that nobody even knows about to make sure that it all runs smoothly, I guess that would be the. End thing that I would say, but there's custodial training, you probably saw the penguin sign out here, it's time to start walking like a penguin, because we did get Ashley Frost this morning. The safety reminders about um. Oh, snow removal at stall, playground safety, ocean inspection. Um, there was eighteen thousand dollars that they raised, or that was a grant that went to replace some lead issues for primary school, Taylor's Falls. To replace faucets so that the high school in Taylor's Falls will switch out drinking faucets too, that was some lead abatement. Things, I don't know where that grant comes from, but.
State.
State.
There's a red card.
So we, we take advantage of those types of things, there's a fairly extensive injury report, and it was kind of. Said that maybe the custodians were a little shorthanded and rushing around, and maybe some of those things were caused as a result of that, but. We're back to full strength, and I don't know if that's wholly true. So they had hired some more people, and things were, seem to be better.
Yeah, the full staff. The full staff.
Okay. Some doormats from another grant that were purchased at a discount that are. That go in front of the door one and the back rear door. And then some Wildcat Center, Dan had some things with Wildcat Center, but then the last one, I just want to say. Which I'm gonna try not to dangle too much, they were having an issue because a diving board needed to be greased. Now thinking it was the thing underneath, you know. Yeah, they wouldn't grease the diving.
We want kids slipping on.
So anyway, I thought that was a little funny. But anyway, there's a lot going on.
As always.
In a report of what's been happening in health and safety.
Very good. Sarah, Brenda, do you have anything? We attended the legislative, the spread, you can talk about that, Sarah.
No, we were. All there. Yeah, it was, it was a great forum, it was not hugely attended this year. Um, it might just be a product of the last election year, but it was really good to connect with our legislators, I thought that was a really good conversation. Um, they're, they're hearing us, they, they understand the problems we're facing, so that's, that's a really good thing.
Very good. All right, thank you. We'll move on to student update.
So I'd like to start by just highlighting that part of our process and different looking at a bond campaign is that we have to submit information to state in Minnesota. Form education to commission to review, ensure that it meets the criteria of what we're trying to accomplish, and get a positive comment back from them. Uh, I am really pleased to tell you in a very efficient and quick manner this time, we've already received that back, and it's get back as possible, so we are pleased. It's another piece that just allows us to keep moving forward and get this work done, so. Just waiting for the opportunity to be able to submit that early and also get it back in a more prompt way than we did the year before. Uh, Strive Mentor Program, just wanted to put a plug for that really quick. Strive is a program through RER which focuses on mentorship, it's generally specified for seniors in high school, but we wanted to shift a little bit for middle age grade students this year. And we had our second meeting today, and it's just a really cool experience, I want to tell the board members who want to come to one of the meetings, it's early in the morning. Reach out to me, I'll be ready to just come and see what's going on. But today we have Kitty Mouchout come and do goal setting with our group, and it was just a really powerful experience with her presenting, but also our mentors working with their mentees for eighth grade. So just, I, I'm really excited about the work we're doing, and in fact, we're making on kids' lives. Uh, and then another cool part is today I met with a couple of the deans from Bethel, we have a really good partnership with. They'll be coming out in December to do a college and crew readiness piece with our kids, which is really exciting, so. Um, really just happy about the work they're doing, that again, find ways to impact kids positively. The last thing I want to talk about today is that I have a student leadership group that I need within the high school throughout the year. And a representative of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors, and there's about sixteen people in the group. And we just spent time talking, listening to what's good, what things they want us to give feedback on, and just sharing information, similar when we do other groups around the district and our community, so that. We're having this open dialogue about just what we can do to make this the best practice and experience we can for our students. And one activity I gave them was, give us some positivity, what, what's going well for you? In your experience at the high school, and also on the flip side, some narrative pieces of where can we find different opportunities to get better on stuff. And I'll say this, um, the opportunity slide, there was literally only a few things on there, which was great, because it shows we're doing some really good work, and we had a good dialogue about. But we had a lot of positives, and there's power there. I want to read a couple. So I think sometimes, especially I feel like in today's day and age, education stuff gets a bum rap for maybe not doing all the right things, and not preparing, and. And you know, we're talking about data tonight, and I think there's so many disowners, and just once you hear it from the voice of kids, good things are happening at our schools. The first one talked about homecoming weekend, that was a celebration for them, because the coronation, Pat Best walked through the football game. This person was a senior, they just talked about how important it is to have those moments, and how awesome it was, and how it was put together to really celebrate kids. There was a compliment about student council as well, the events they're doing, and how awesome that is as well. Here's one, it said the best part so far has been going to all this, all my last senior football games, and also when I assumed team won the Cambridge Pemudge. I think the best part of the year so far is going to go wild, and going to all the school events for free, in case you did not know, we made this available for kids this year, it was an unconscious decision we made. For ninety twelve to not pay for this, and I earned so many positives from students today, makes me feel really good about things we're making. I think the best part of the year is just having good teachers. How's that not feel good? Congratulations to people for it. The best part of all the activities that are going on, and the vibe the students bring to the events, and then the last one I put down was, right, to talk about the best part of the school year. Is being with friends and seeing new teachers. It's really easy times to pick things apart, and I just want people to know, good things are happening here. We got good people, we got good kids, I talked a lot about with them is that they set the tone for things we do, and how proud myself, the principal, other people that are there, just. You guys did a great job representing our district, and we're proud of you for that. And it's, it's, it's been a really good stretch of the year, so I don't want to lose track of the good things are happening, because there is a world really happy and more powerful sense.
Can I give you credit for talking to the kids, I just think it's so important, because I know a lot of them, you know, sixteen, I'm an important voice to hear, so I'm grateful you did that, I appreciate it. All right, any other questions? There weren't any questions, thank you. Okay. So it's listed below the positive review and comment, but later on, we're gonna do the reservation.
No reservation.
No reservation, anything, okay, okay. Sarah, we're to you, we're getting here from our director of teaching, aren't you, she's gonna go. Sarah Schmidt?
Hi. Okay, so this is our presentation on how we did assessment wise last year in spring, but I thought we would start with the short version. A little sample test I'd like you to try to take, um, will take a minute, see if you can answer these five questions.
She's so unkind.
If you want. I'd like all people to participate.
As a backdrop for the board and the board, we do our super.
Thank you.
It's the first time.
She didn't say my office, right? Yeah, it's a really effective. It's a short. But I am only gonna give you one minute, so.
Just like state tests in high states. When you come.
You cannot use it.
I love the first question.
No. Maybe.
Not very good. I've heard. You're not very good at math.
I'm joking.
All right, we have about, oh, ten more slides left.
Is this time?
Yes.
This one is for today.
If you even show us this stuff? Can you even show us this?
It's been released for okay, we're not gonna show it.
There's a fact story.
All right, do your best. Okay, so questions number ones through three are from a nineteen eighties Iowa basics test, grades three through five. So number one, the answer was C, basically one answers. Number two, the answer is C. Number three is B. Now, questions four and five are from a sample MCA questions that are um, like what kids would get nowadays, grades three through five. So number four is B.
Yes.
And five was C.
Yes.
You don't have to share your answers, but I, what I'm wondering is, just when you look at. Yes. There you go. A product of our Shisalalei system, good. Just um, if you don't mind, just like give me a minute reflection, like what is difference, what is the difference between questions one through three versus four and five?
Oh my goodness. These seem so basic.
Four and five are a problem, is it a problem?
Mm-hmm. Multi-step. Yeah. Any other?
Four and five are more real-world situations, you did. Applications.
Yeah. It did not put any reading questions on, because we wanted to do something short. If you get a reading passage now in the MCAs, it's multiple pages of the story, and then there's about ten questions that go with that one story, so it was hard for me to like show you a snippet, you'd have to read the whole story to be able to. To do a reading question, where like number two would have been what would have been in the reading type test back then, just a straight up mocap question. So I guess I wanted to ground it with this, to show you like, if, if a lot of people have a perception of what state testing is like from what they experienced in like an Iowa basic test, the test has greatly changed. For state assessments to what kids are getting on the MCAs now, I mean, they are multi-step. They have more um, problem solving and analytical thinking that you have to do to be able to get to an answer, you can't just do one simple calculation and find that answer. For math, or for really for reading, you have to always go back to the text and look at the line and find it, and then interpret that line again to be able to answer it. So it just, I think sometimes, this is like, I don't know if the public knows what these tests look like, because they are under lock and key, like you can't see the actual test, but we can get some sample questions.
Do you know when that change sort of happened, I suppose it was over a time period, but when did that transformation?
Which like just like going to mall, I mean, every time the standards change, they revise the questions, so like right now, math, we're gonna get a new math test this spring. Which means we should not compare those results to what we did for math last year, and so those standards, they shift every ten years and statute. So then the test will change following those standards change, I'd have to go back and look, like where did we get more complex, like I don't know how many years.
That answer was.
Yeah.
I think we had a quick gap, so I think it's, it's around, I'll tell you, early two thousands. Because that's when the rigor came up, or when schools were expected to get a hundred percent by a certain time period, and when the legislation came up, it was a push, so. You saw the difference between an Iowa basic or Stanford nine test back in the day, to now they went to state test enrollment.
Right, and I guess like, that's a good answer, because I feel like that's the, when I started teaching, so it's always kind of looked like this for us, that's like not what I got when I was a kid. Right, yeah. So some, like, first of all, why we assess, just in general, I think it's important to know, it has three main reasons why we assess students. One, we need to know if they're learning the standards. So the MCAs are written for the Minnesota standards, but we also have classroom assessments that do that same thing. The second reason is, our teachers want to know if the strategies they're using are effective, so when they get the assessment, do kids learn what they wanted them to learn? But also like, if I tried something different in first hour versus third hour, what was more effective for kids? And then the last reason we assess kids is for them to reflect and understand if they're learning. So when we look at that, there are different assessments you can give. Standardized assessments, I have at the top of the pyramid, because there's not very many of them, they're very formal, um, they're summative, meaning like usually they're one time at the end of the year in which you taught. And so they don't give a lot of feedback on the purposes two and three, which was to guide your instruction or to guide students' reflection on their own learning. It really just gives us feedback as a system, how are our systems doing on those standards? The more effective ones, and then we have more of are the classroom assessments at the bottom, those are the best ones, because they hit all three of those criteria. Benchmark assessments are kind of the middle ones, like um, Bassbridge testing, like what you do three times a year to see how kids are growing, like in math and reading, those are your benchmark assessments. So I just wanted to kind of ground that before we dive into the data. So standardized assessments, you know, one time a year, they really don't give us a lot of feedback, like instructionally, because even once you look at the results, and you're like, oh, maybe I should have done this different, that whole cohort, cohort of kids are gone, and now you've got to do it with a different group. They might come with a whole different skill sets, a different. They might come with a whole different skill sets and different fire knowledge, so, yeah.
How many days of testing is there for MCAs?
Depends on the level you're talking about.
So let's just say fifth grade.
Fifth grade, I mean, they're going to do at least two days reading, uh, days as in two hours. Two hours reading, two hours math, and fifth grade gets an hour, uh, two in science. So roughly probably six days, that's days, six hours. Some kids, it's not science, so some take longer.
When I hear teachers talk, they say, man, it's just a lot of, a lot of testing.
Because they take their best.
That much testing would be 4% that much.
The junior year gets hit the hardest in high school because they have MCA science and math and then ACT plus if they're in any eighth year.
And what are the high stakes of MCA tests, like for the junior year?
High stakes for a kid is they're not. They, I mean, it, it does not affect the child's life at all if they do not do well on the MCA tests. They don't need it to get into college, they don't need it to graduate, they don't need it for credits. So we're just asking them to try their best so that we as a system can look at how we're doing. There's a little more state in the game, K through, well, we don't give it K, but three through eight because we do use it to help us determine what kids maybe get into advanced classes. But once you're in high school, it's self-selecting into your advanced classes, so it no longer really matters for the child. It's got to be inherent driven, I guess, that they want to do well. Um, so what on the MCAs, just a reminder, um, it's grades three through eight, you get ELA and math. And then, um, 10th grade is when we do ELA or reading, 11th grade we do math, 11th grade we do science. Um, and then science is also fifth and eighth. And this came up at the, the community presentation on it. This, this exactly aligns with the federal law as the Minnesota took, what are the minimum amounts of times you have to test kids on some sort of standardized test and Minnesota adopted exactly that. Because some people are like, how come you only do science five, eight and 11th? Well, that's, that's what SSS does, you have to do it once in elementary, once in middle and once in high school. So we do, we do it at the end of elementary, end of middle and then, and then you have to do science during the year in which they take biology. So it's a life science test. Um, so that's why, science has a brand new version, we just, so like it got re, like done last year. So we're still kind of digging through that data, it just got released, it was a delayed release because of the new test. So I only have, um, reading and math results for you tonight. Um, so in general, on the left is what you traditionally have seen as a proficiency. So as a district, so this is reading, so this is third through eighth grade plus 10th grade. We were 56% proficient, meaning kids exceeded or met the standards and then the state was 49.6. I included the partial on the right because I feel like it's a little bit of a Minnesota misnomer to be like, kids who are partially proficient on the MCAs are like failing or not successful or can't read. They are probably the kids who still get Bs, Cs and Ds in high school and can read, but they might have missed that meet score by one point, two points, three points. I mean, and it's that one time test, I mean, it's one day, one time that they take this test. Um, so I think, I think a better way to look at it is to include those partially proficiencies and then we're sitting close to 80% of kids who are probably going to graduate and do just fine. The kids who get the does not meet, those are the ones we're most concerned about. And for the most part, they will probably be special education students or kids getting intervention already. So we're well aware of them and want a program to help them anyway.
So I have one thing real quick, you saw this last year and we're actually going to use this for our annual report as well because we feel like the story is not being told completely. And we actually tested with some of our people in our super, super back in September. Guy wanted to be responsive, that, that makes sense because again, we're so programmed like this is the only number and then nothing else matters. There's so much we do, and she'll get into that stuff, but just wanted to let you know, we're showing this for a second here. You'll see this number actually come out as well and talk more about it in our reports, could maybe too.
I think it's important because when the public sees the first number, they're like, can you, 50%?
Right, they can, they don't need that. No, they can read, they can read, they can read, they're just, right, you know. And even the reading test, it's not a reading, it's not a reading test. I mean, you have, like, yes, you have to be able to decode, but you need to be able to do inferences and analysis and character. Like it's way more than just can you read? Yeah. And then the next chart I just thought, okay, if you included that partially proficient, where would our percents be over time? And so we're the green bar and you can kind of track us over time of where our proficiency is in reading as a district, so it's all grades. And then compared to the states, if you included that partially proficient, I feel like then we're hovering closer to the, the high 70s instead of low 80s range for that.
I'm just going to make a comment here because the Center for the American Experiment, Experiment came out and I think a lot of us probably saw that. And not only did they put the proficiencies, for example, Cromwell writing published, we'll say they went 1.25%. They gave a letter grade for it. So they chose the first proficiency, which if you look at ours is 59, that would mean we'd be, uh, D+ or.
Traditional grading scale, is that what?
Yeah, so they literally graded them, uh, with that proficiency as a grade, like a percentage. So at 59%, if you average it up, it'd be 60, it'd be E-. So that's how they looked at those things, exactly how we are constantly battling, I guess, the rhetoric out there. So if they did this for every school, how does your third grader stack up with reading? I don't know how many saw that, but it's, it's, it's so deceiving when you see that. And, and I think we scored pretty well, yet it's a snapshot, we know all those types of things. But I'm just saying, those are the things that we're battling and somebody wants to look it up, look it up. Third, how does your school stack up? Third grade reading proficiency, the American Center for the American Experiment.
I was just curious, is that just Minnesota schools?
Just Minnesota schools, yeah, so why is that a red rock central, Minnetonka? Minnetonka, okay, what do you think? Well, they're a D+. You know, so the highest score is a C+, that's 79.41%.
Which we can talk about what a traditional grading scale, anyways, not 100 points.
Right, it's not a grading.
That's another whole question.
You can't even score 100, yeah, so. I'm just saying, this is one of the general public sees and I've seen it on baseball at least a dozen times. How does your third, how do your third grade reading in your school stack up?
Yeah.
And that's kind of the thing we're battling.
Which proves how we look at the data actually matters because people are basing their rhetoric on how they choose to look at the data.
Our math, I mean, if you want to see math, so if you look at the traditional proficiency, it just meets and exceeds 56.6. If you include partials, we're a little over 80% then in math. And then again, trend data over time, if you do it by partially proficient, we're again, always kind of in the high 70s to low 80s the last few years. The other thing I want to tell you, this is, this is one data point, I feel like the public really looks at MCAs, but we look at so much more and there are other ways to know whether what we're doing is working. So like, I just wanted to show you a couple of other things we look at. For example, we can pull all grades of kids. And so like this is a chart of just, um, the last few years of all the high school English classes, all levels. So kids in an intervention English class, two in honors or an AP English class. And then if they got 70% or better in that class. And so in general, you'd want 70 to 80% of your kids to get a 70% or higher. That would tell us our core is working. And then I had to comp it by terms because some kids take it term one and term two and some kids take it term three and term four because of the block system. So I had to chunk it out by terms so you could see it. But in general, we're meeting that, so when you look at English classes, all of our kids are getting at least an 80, 80% of our kids are getting at least a 70% or better, which tells, tends to tell us that our core English classes are doing well. And then I, we can, and we can do this at middle school, we, um, elementary grades are a little, like that's done a little differently, but middle school and high school, you can look at this a little bit more. Obviously, there's a lot of subjectivity with grades, but it's one thing, another thing we could look at. And then math, we do the same, those scores are a little tiny bit lower, but again, like math probably took the biggest hit with COVID so when you're looking at how kids came out of COVID and how their grades came back. And, um, we have a lot, the sequencing in math changes a lot more with your advanced tracking, kids potentially like not having like intermediate algebra and going right from advanced eighth grade into like, they don't have that additional algebra, like you have sequencing more issues with math, which makes it a little different when you comp all those kids together into one data pool. But we can set, we do, I mean, I do have the data where it separates out by kids in advanced classes, regular classes, intervention classes. So it's just more data we can look at to see if our core is working. And then another example of data we look at is, this is the percent of kids who are in any access intervention for math and reading. And you can see in the last few years, the percent of our kids getting it, this is like tier two intervention for support. This is not special education students, but like it's declining, which tends, one conclusion you could maybe draw to that is if your core is working well, then you have less kids who need to get intervention. And that's been declining over the last few years.
Can you separate that out?
Yes.
Math and reading?
Mm-hmm.
Have you noticed a difference of the levels trending in this data?
Yeah, like it, um, both are following the same pattern. Uh, we do get, I, and part of this is just resource allocation, we service more kids in reading than we do math and part of that is just staffing as well. Um, so we do have more kids serviced in reading intervention, but that is the same trend. So we do, we actually drop it out, we also have behavior, so we have math, we have reading, we also have behavior data. And then we also look at kids who are in intervention, then how many exit because intervention worked. So again, more data, like any data you want, you basically add. But I feel like that does kind of tell you the health of your system, if your core is working well, less kids should be intervention. Um, and then I thought I'd just show a couple of Thursday data. Now granted, I didn't want to do every grade everything because it's Thursday night and you, I mean, there's, I can show you every grade in every subject area and that would be a lot, but in general, this is what we're looking at if you wanted to see a sample. Like letter sounds are a really good indicator of how, how kids are doing in kindergarten and this is our fall to spring growth last year. So in the fall, 51% of our kids knew, were proficient in knowing their letter sounds and 31% did not meet their target in the fall. But then the growth, and this is district wide, so both elementary buildings, we went up to 71%. And I think the other key is like we really shrunk the red, like the 31% of kids who were not even like, did not meet the target letter sounds, only 9% still couldn't meet the target letter sounds. Um, so we look at that data again as an indicator of how our reading is doing like in kindergarten. In first grade, a sample is segmenting, like if you can break apart the sounds into their individual components. And again, we see that kind of growth. And for the most part, that's how almost every grade kind of looks, because like they all have growth from fall to spring. Um, it doesn't quite have as much growth as the grades go up, um, as the reading also gets more difficult, but that's the other data we'll look at, every building looks at their building level data and we look, the district MTSS team looks at the district level data. So I just wanted to bring you back to this, remember there's three kinds of assessments? So those classroom assessments are probably the most powerful. And I didn't even show you any of that, but that's like the quizzes you take in class or the other chapter, that's going to give the teacher the most feedback. I love that he did just do. Benchmark assessments are the most, the next best helpful and that's kind of like that, letter sounds is an example of it. And then your MCAs would be at the peak for your ACTs, keep that final one. Do you have any question?
I just have a comment. I love this kindergarten slide. I just love that because I had a reader, I had a kindergartner that was so excited to start kindergarten because she was going to learn how to read. And it didn't go well for her, so I just think, thinking back on that, if she had been part of the letter things, things would have been a lot different in her life, so I love this slide.
I did share with each of you that article. I think it's, those are the kind of things where you do have to address. Because I know I've been already confronted on that half a dozen times and I just think we have to. And I actually responded back to the author of that article and I did have a dialogue back and forth with this gal who was, who wrote that article. And I, and you just can't get anywhere, but you should look at it and if you look at that, the whole state of Minnesota is in trouble. And that's how people view that too, and I, I think there's enough people on there that, that look at that. And they really publish that, so I do think we need to, you know, not to be too concerned about it, we certainly need to combat that, I guess, at least give a match with that so they understand what, what MCA testing is.
Other data we could, we could show too is, um, there's less data, it's called, and tracking kids once they leave us, like how well are they doing once they go? And that's getting more robust and so we can look at what percent of our kids go on and do, like go into college and finish college or how they do in the work, like you can track some of that data to also show that what we've done here sets kids up for success and they're doing okay when they leave too.
You, you don't need more work, but I think sometimes when I read this, we've talked back and forth with Brian too about this. I, I, I think there almost needs to be some kind of a response when you see that, but I don't want to bring too much light to it, but it's all over the place and you don't have to go very far to find that it's been unsellable means that, yeah. I, I think sometimes they require somewhat of a response to those kinds of things. Because I think you, maybe you'd even seen it in your super, the soup, I don't know if anybody said anything or people called or you here, Sarah, but it'd be, it'd be really nice to have just an issue, bullet point of, here's our response to this kind of stuff.
I think as our annual report finalizes for next month, because we're, we're in design mode right now, we have intentionally taken our assessment data and started to do this new narrative. So I think we're going to have a very good response moving forward to putting a new standard on the table. So that's going to help us a lot too because remember, in essence, everyone's going to sit down and report about. So then they'll have it, if they're bigger tests, but more importantly, we'll have it to say this is a real name. And you're right, I mean, it's just been back to perception. I will say, we, we sort of showed this to our folks in the room and tested this out a little bit. And just said, I mean, are the things you want to poke in this or do you think they don't understand or that doesn't make sense? And I felt like our response was really authentic, like, no, I get it, we did, a lot of it was, we just didn't know. Even like the test itself, that opened up everyone's eyes and turned the whole thing off to like, wow.
It was a longer version too.
Exactly.
It had many components to it, there was.
Exactly, because it was like, I can't believe the difference between the 1980s and now what our kids have to do. And what Sarah didn't share either is that when you took the two, people were more successful in the 1980 version and people struggled on the other one. And we're like, if we did it, it was a third, fourth grade sort of level test. So I think it's just good to get that perspective because again, once you can't actually do this, you're like, wow.
Well, I hate to say it, those of you who are there in this room took those tests, I don't know. That's kind of interesting, I, I think having this bad, I just think, I wish I had this in a Z, in a, if I could just, okay, answer the questions.
It was hard to find the, like, the 1980s Iowa, because that's also under lock and key. Like I had to do a little like dark web digging to try to find the question. I don't know if it's dark web. I don't know what it is, it was probably, it was Googling, it was just Googling, but it was like, you know, old images, somebody scanned it and they, they have a lock key too. So I don't know if you.
I'm going to be arrested.
I don't even know what the dark web is, let's be honest. I. Sarah, you were doing so well. Yeah. But I just was thinking, don't share it because I don't know if we're, I mean, I had to pull those questions from, share it to somebody.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
But I think that exercise is really useful and that's a question that you've been coming up with the legislative form, what has changed? And I think that's really powerful to say, if the tests themselves change as we update its bench.
Right, what we expect to do.
It's higher. Um, so we, as we respond and, and, and address these questions, that's really powerful, this is really powerful.
And I think just the presentation you gave today is exactly how we need to address this. We need to say, this is how we frame it, this is how we use the assessment, this is how our kids are actually doing by multiple measures.
Right.
It's important to just keep sharing that.
Yeah.
Well, one thing that came across really well at this soup, with the soup event, which if anybody was, you should go, that was really, it was a good event. The, the point of those daily, that, that classroom assessment level stuff is that we then can intervene on individual learners and improve their outcomes now versus taking those MCAs, sending them off and saying, oh, good luck, but we missed you. You can't read now, but we missed you. This is kind of an intervention.
Yes. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah.
Okay, we are going to move to consent agenda, but before we vote on the consent agenda, I'd like to pull out Brenda Carlson's contract. We'll vote on that some of the way. You know, do we need the full board here to vote on her?
We've been told this, yeah.
I think, and we don't, we don't have Josh here. So I think we need to pull Brenda off, who's on the full board here.
That's, that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah. I don't think that's, here's what I'd say. We just wanted to, if you could do it tonight, if you were judging it, if it needed to be, we'll do it again.
I think we just told it, I come and checked on what's official.
At the time, I'm usually done coaching by the time it's okay.
Okay, you're right.
True, we're way ahead of schedule.
For tonight, we're going to pull Brenda out and we'll need a motion in a second to accept her head softball coach contract. Um, so depending on what, we'd like to make a motion. We'll leave a note here.
For a second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm abstaining.
Yeah. Again, same sign. Well, uh, Brenda's softball coaching contract passes. Now we'll go ahead and we'll cover the rest of the consent agenda. That includes claims and accounts, personnel, the rest of the personnel listed, certified agreements, extra particular agreements, other agreements.
I make a motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda items.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Rest of consent agenda is accepted. Looks like we have no old business, so we will run to new business, we have some donations. Um, we have the Gene Hus. Um, we have the Gene Hus Foundation for Community Education Robotics for $4,000. The American Legion for School Supplies and Winter Cold Drive for $1,500. The TF Parents for Education for TF Playground Swing Mats for $1,250. Um, in memory of Herb Jangner, we have Shasabulik's Athletic Scholarships for $4,400. And then CLPTO is donating for Lakeside for $9,300. So we'll take a motion in a second, and we'll do it as a roll call vote. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
And we'll start with you, Sarah. Sarah, aye.
Brenda, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jen, aye.
And Lori, aye. We accept the donations, and we thank this community for always being so generous to our schools. All right, we're moving on to the Minnesota High School League Form A. And this is something we do every year, it's attached. I don't know if there's any questions about it, but it's basically our participation in Minnesota High School, correct?
Yep.
Oh, yes, Brenda's our, Brenda's.
The video comes later, right?
Okay.
You can watch it three or four times, like, I have, if you want.
So we'll need a motion in a second to accept the Minnesota High School League Form A, yes, consented. I'll make a motion to accept the Form A, yes, consented. We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. And if the motion passes. Corey Becker is here to talk to us about insurance rates, which I'm sure are going down.
Hi, I am with Doug LaLuce. Uh, I don't know if I have much to say about it this year, just because we didn't have to go out for a bit this year, because we didn't have our rate cap from our insurance company last year. And part of our rate cap is you can't search other companies for a better rate. By law, we have to go out every two years, so next year will be another bit of a year. Um, but they, they went to our rate cap, we were projected with our claims loss ratio to be higher than what the rate cap was, so it was a very smart decision last year to stay with the cross windshield. Otherwise, we would have seen a larger increase than what we are already seeing. So differences up there, the total cost of it, it doesn't break down our contribution versus employee contribution, it's just the total cost year-over-year, what the difference is.
Any questions about these insurance numbers from anyone? What board members do we have on the insurance committee?
I was just gonna say, we did have an insurance committee.
Yeah.
That was related reporting, you know, what the rates are gonna be, so.
Okay.
Didn't want to be redundant.
All right.
I know the claims loss.
So if there are no questions, we do need to make a motion in a second to approve these insurance rates, whether we like it or not. I want to make a motion to accept the insurance.
I make a motion to accept the insurance rates.
Back in, in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, Corey. All right, we need a resolution from the board to call for a special election. We'll need a motion in a second, which we'll roll call. So the entire resolution is in the board book, so we just have, just have a small paragraph here. Resolution relating to determining the necessity of issuing general obligation bonds and calling for a special election, from any of the February date again.
February 10th.
February 10th, may the day of our election. Anything to add before we vote on this?
No, I do say, whoever's watching this or wants to know us, that we spent four months going through after the election surveys, conversations, discussions, assessments, to try to figure out what we want to do to come back, because these things are not gonna go away. Uh, I thought we came up with a really good plan, and which really focused on, I'm sure we still got the work that needs to get done, done, but trying to get an approach to really lessen the burden financially, knowing that it could be a highly taxed area, as well as giving some choice in the matter. So I think we've really taken a lot of perspective, and I'm proud that we're gonna be done to come up with this to really address these.
Yeah, I would just say that there was questions about like, oh, when, why you run it in February? And I said, well, that's about as quick as we could get it up. And, you know, of course, that wasn't the real, and reason for the question, but we do know that we have to ask these things, and we have to get it back out there to the voters. And, and I don't think people realize how much is involved. You just, I think a lot of people just think, well, you just say, you know, you put it on the ballot, that's kind of all there is. Obviously, we've been doing this a bunch, you're probably getting better embedded at it all the time. That would be one thing that I would notice, we, we have changed a couple of things, and it is getting better. And there's some things that we've learned about, such as post-arts, which I addressed again today on social media. And I, and I just think we're just doing it better, and I think something will take time to get that all together. I think a lot of things, again, those happen behind the scenes. If we just, we just make a resolution, if all, all the work that goes behind it, there's a lot of hours behind it.
Lot of hours. All right, if there are no further questions, we'll take a motion in a second, which we'll follow to accept this resolution for calling for a special election. I'll make a motion in a second. So we have a motion in a second.
Second.
We have a second. And Sarah, we'll start with you again for the roll call. Sarah, aye.
Brenda, aye.
Jen, aye.
Jen, aye.
And Lori, aye. The resolution passes to call for a special election. All right, if, if there isn't anything further, we need a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
I still move.
I second that one.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, adjourn the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Again, same sign. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.